And you should have a copy of the letter from the building inspector about the decision that he made. It's a little hard to extract the decision from how many cars were parked in the lot. It does, it does look to me like the auxiliary parking lot is being used and I'm not sure that there is, I mean, it's not totally neglected to put it that way.
Can you go through the numbers again?
Pardon?
Can you go through the numbers that Tony-
Well, it's a little hard, I don't know what day of the week these are.
I've got the weekend listed.
The first inspection was on April twentieth at eleven fifty eight A M. What day in the month is that?
I think it was December.
Four cars in auxiliary parking lot, twenty lot cars on soccer field. Left twelve oh eight four cars still in auxiliary parking lot. Second inspection, one eleven P M on April twentieth, four cars in auxiliary parking lot, same four as at eleven fifty eight. Seventy-five cars on soccer field, left one twenty-four P M, four cars in auxiliary parking lot. Third inspection, two thirty-four P M. Six cars in auxiliary parking lot, different ones from previous, eighty cars on the soccer field, left two forty-eight P M, five cars in auxiliary parking lot. Fourth inspection, four seventeen P M, fourteen cars in auxiliary parking lot, fifty-three cars on soccer field, four twenty-four P M left, four thirty-one P M, fourteen cars in auxiliary parking lot. So, not knowing exactly when the games were played and so on, but it does seem it's getting some use. We certainly didn't specify in the condition of approval that the auxiliary parking lot had to fill up first and it's difficult to say quite what we want to do. What do you think?
Well, what was the agreement? I mean, I wasn't-
Oh.
I just want, I've got this, but was there any percentage kind of thing?
This is, this is what it is.
So, it wasn't like one was an overflow of the other?
No, I'll, I'll just read it. The permit shall expire June thirtieth, two thousand and ten. Two, as offered, the applicant shall utilize an off-site parking area to enable park and walking to fields and or carpooling to fields. Such a site shall accommodate sixty cars. Three, the applicant shall submit traffic count data to the Office of Planning and Development two times per year. Data shall be taken on representative standard activity weeks, once in the spring and once in the fall season. Automatic traffic counters shall be placed in two locations. One shall be on Island Road near Route five, the other shall be located beyond the High ninety-one bridge at the entrance to the Marina. So.
Well, can I just ask, as point of clarification, what we have the authority to do at this point? Can we put additional restrictions, conditions in? Can we clarify the condition that exists?
You can't do any, do any new conditions. This is really Tony's call. He's the enforcement officer. So, he's just asking, because you guys wrote the permit, do you have any input you want to do? He can totally ignore or follow your, but you know, you can sort of give the applicant feedback in terms of, part of this, I think for all of you, was to give a two and a half year time period, three year time period, whatever it was, for them to prove that they can work with the neighborhood. And so certainly, you can express dissatisfaction if that's what you want, but always you're just trying to make it easier.
I am very dissatisfied. Four cars in auxiliary lot is, you know, I, I wish that we had been more expressive in our conditions, but you know, that was an extremely long conversation we had, a compromise that I think we all worked really hard on with both sides. And I think that this is the soccer people completely ignoring that, you know, four cars in the auxiliary lot and eighty on the field? That's not even a good faith effort. I'm, I'm, I'm very disappointed. And this is not at all what I had in mind when I was the person that, well, I did propose this actually. The soccer people proposed it and I picked up on it because I thought it was a good compromise. And, and this is not at all, I think, working the way that I had anticipated it would work when I proposed it, I was going to.
Um, George? So, just on a practical basis, probably what's happening is there's no shuttle, and I'm not for sure, this is an assumption on my part, there's no shuttle running from the parking lot to the field. So, that families have to get out and then walk along the street, like most families are already running five minutes late, ten minutes late. So, they don't want to take that time. We, we also talked about having a path from the auxiliary lot to a path I think developed, and I'm not sure where that was in our permit, whether that was a good faith, kind of recognized by the soccer clubs to develop a path through the woods so they didn't have to walk on that narrow road and also it might be a little quicker.
There's nothing in the permit.
But I thought, I thought that path was there, it wasn't the thing to develop it, but the, the only auxiliary parking lot, there was a path that allowed you, you did not have to walk back out onto the road and walk along, you know, it's a narrow road.
Because I'm also wondering on the part of the neighbors, do they want eighty families parading up and down their street every day? Again, that's going to become somewhat of a burden, I would think also. You know, I, I, again, I, I think they have gone beyond the spirit of what we were suggesting here for sure. They're not making a good faith effort at this point in time, especially on a very busy weekend. So, you know, one option is to do kind of this is your first strike and two strikes, you're out, I'm not sure. A warning shot across the bow and a bad analogy.
Would, would it make sense to have a person who put up signs that would express?
Well, the, the, the parking lot is well marked, I think, and there are signs for it. It's perfectly clear the entry and exit. It's just a grassy plot, actually.
Well, and if every person that was in this room at the time of the hearing, they all heard what the, what the condition was. If they were all parking there, there would be a lot more than four cars in a parking lot. I think it's an intentional ignoring of, of the condition.
Really?
Yeah, I think certainly was implicit in the, in that conversation that, that the lot is used. And it, it looks to me like there's a lack of enforcement. So, I would, I would want Tony to find out from the soccer people exactly what are they doing to enforce it because I agree, this doesn't look like a good faith effort. This is spring, you know, this is their first, you know, they should be showing their best days at this particular point and they're not.
Okay.
Is Tony, I, I would have thought Tony was here so we could talk to him about this if he wants.
No, he's, he's pretty been out pretty straight because of all the fire, recent rash of house fires and stuff and he's been, and I told him he didn't have to come. He really wants some guidance from us and all he could say was, what do we do?
Did he send us other photos?
He did send us photos and we have them, we can look at them, it's, I mean.
Four cars in. Well, I have a suggestion of what he can do and not, even if he's willing to do this, he cannot let the first sixty soccer cars go down Island Pond Road.
Well, I, my thought, one thought was to have somebody from one of the soccer organizations direct traffic into the lot until it's full.
I don't know if they're in line to do that.
Yeah, I think that, that it's not a bad idea except for them to, you know, give an example of their good faith.
Or to come up with an enforcement plan. What is their plan to enforce?
Yeah, I mean, there conceivably could be, the auxiliary parking lot could be full and the other lot could be, could have a hundred cars in it. But it's still a substantial reduction of the car traffic. I will say that Tony further in his letter, he noted that the cars traveling on Island Road were driving at or below the twenty mile per hour, per hour posted. I also noted that there were moms with kids in soccer dress walking along the road and rivers and they were cautious with walking traffic. Uh, it seemed apparent that the early teams, first two inspections made little or no attempt to use auxiliary lot. The last two inspection teams are making a very strong effort to utilize the auxiliary parking. I did take photos at all times and I was there on both lots. So, we have, is that how the lights are on? Okay, this is the actual soccer field parking lot.
Someone tell me, this is the projector, sorry, I want to see on the computer, it's definitely a whisper here.
Okay, this is the auxiliary parking lot with packaging cooperation in the background. The soccer field lot again. And auxiliary lot again. This is the auxiliary lot, one of the signs, I'm not sure what that one says, but.
So, it's a one. Exit only is on two words, I can make a top one.
Is there a sign that says fill this up first?
No, there isn't. Okay. Okay, all right, and this is the soccer field lot again. I guess the fields are behind, well, this is taking the fields to the left, they're slightly back. Yeah, this is the sparsely populated parking lot. I don't have which particular times these are.
It has that sort of theme.
Uh, so I think it's being utilized, it's there, it's not being utilized enough and I feel that they should make a better effort. So, um, now this is the, the late in the afternoon when it was fairly fully unused. I, I would think that.
The max number of cars is fourteen that Tony saw?
He saw fourteen.
Is that right? And at the same time, there are fifty-three cars on the field? That's not much bigger of an effort as far as I'm concerned. I mean, plus Tony's heart.
Well, yeah.
So, I guess, I mean, in terms of what our, our abilities are, we can, wait, what, I mean, for a frame, what, what are our options? We can ask Tony to contact them and say, place somebody at the end of the road directing traffic into the auxiliary parking lot.
Again, it's his call, so you're just giving your feedback. You could say, you're totally satisfied, you just have to do anything. It's so horrendous, you think you should shut them down, they're violating the permit. Or you should try to work with them, try to figure out, you know, whoever said the one, you know, first strike ref to say, we're putting a notice, we expect better, you know, here's the, here's the kind of things you expect. So, giving recommendations is fine.
Okay, so, but in terms of, I'm trying to think, is there any other way? We can't, if we can't amend this, we can't say we want somebody on the end of the road directing traffic into the parking lot. You can't, you certainly can't as a, as a permit, you could, you could certainly suggest to Tony that he recommends that he either shuts them down unless they will do, etc. Well, I think that was a good suggestion, if they, I mean, if there's always an official with the soccer club down there, having somebody directing traffic such that they, they're directing the first sixty cars into that overflow lot until it's full.
And also, the parking issue doesn't address the people who drop the kids off, which is much worse because they acknowledge it's a double drop because they drop the kids off, so then they drive back and then they drop back again. So, that's four trips down the street. And again, I wish we'd been more specific in the permit, but you know, I would like to see anyone who's dropping kids off to not, to either leave them at the end of Island Road so the kids can, or they can park and walk with the kids either down Island Road or down the path and not use Island Road for dropping off, that they use the auxiliary lot for dropping off.
We have no idea how many kids are dropped off and how many kids are, it's kind of remote, so.
They readily acknowledge, a lot of parents said, yeah, I dropped my kids off and they do a double drop.
It would be nice to see the auxiliary parking lot has the drop off.
That's what I'm saying.
When you go to, like, you know, if you go to a ski area, typically they have a designated drop off area where you can unload and get people to keep moving. So, I think having a designated drop off area in the overflow park there, which has a path down the field, is also a good idea. And they have a, they obviously, I mean, they're putting up signs. They can put a sign up that says you have a drop off area.
Okay, well, let's, let's say we give them a warning, I don't know whether it's three strikes here or not, but some kind of a warning and ask them to, or have him ask them to get more use of the auxiliary parking lot. There's got to be some threat behind it, I suppose.
Well, I, I think we have to set, we have to set some kind of benchmark, like within two months, the next time Tony does a site visit and counts cars, if he finds more than thirty, less than forty cars in the auxiliary lot and some kind of ratio, if there's more cars down below than are in the auxiliary lot, then that's grounds for a removal of the permit. But some kind of benchmark for him and for us to say, you just haven't done it.
Well, yeah, but in fact, all we really did was require them to do the lot. It was a little hard for us to, even then, it was hard for us to come up with the actual enforcement.
We did ask them to do traffic counts as well twice a year.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what's the status of the traffic count, is there one of those due?
We haven't gotten spring yet, I don't know if the fall one was filed last year.
I don't think they had to do one in the fall because we didn't decide this till.
We actually was, was, oh, you're right, it was August sixth.
That's, um.
Was it August sixth, did we? I thought it was in the fall.
There's, there's August sixth here.
All right, I'm, I'm remembering well.
As I submitted it on my.
I wasn't expecting, I guess I wasn't expecting much of this, but.
Here it says the voting deadline was October twenty fourth.
Correct, we, that's kind of a time we had legally, we actually filed a city protocol on August sixth.
Okay, then, final signing was August ninth. Okay.
You know, the, the spirit of our, our ruling was that they were going to mitigate the traffic impacts on the neighborhood by some fashion and they haven't mitigated those yet. There are still egregious impacts on the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, it, just to take the other side for one minute, they, they did what we required them to do. And they, we can't, they can't force the people to use the auxiliary parking lot. All they can use is moral suasion, but there is, but if we get some kind of a threat behind it, can we reexamine the, the whole permit?
Well, I think they can, of course, because they did not allow parking in the Oxbow.
Yeah, they can, yeah, they can.
I mean, they, they, they certainly tools that goes up the road to do stuff.
Right, and if we, if you don't do this, mothers and fathers, we're going to lose these fields per the building inspector as of September first.
Okay.
You know, and he wants some recommendation from us, I think, what those kind of measurements might be. And that's the only tool that's going to probably work, that's the only threat that's going to work for us.
What would be the steps to take to say you could park at the, at the field?
Well, I think it's what I would say, that, you know, Tony could say, you know, climate risk and figure climate permit, you know, if within, George said, two months, within X time period, does not as many cars park in auxiliary lot as there are in primary lots. Tony can say he's, or about to.
Up to the forty, yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I would vote for being more strong than that, that the first sixty cars are in the lot. If there are, if there are cars on the field, when all the spots are not full on the auxiliary lot, that's a problem for me. I mean, the, the fact that there's no, I don't think that there's nobody here, as far as I can tell, all of those kids in their soccer uniforms that were here in the first meeting are all not here tonight.
Well, that's fine.
Oh, it's, it's fine, but I'm, I'm not hearing that, that these folks are taking me seriously at all, so.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't think it's, well, okay, I don't think it's fair to say just because they didn't show up. That, that, that hasn't been really reflected on that at all, right there.
But what is fear, Frandy, is that, you know, this isn't working? And so either they're going to have to enforce it or pay the consequences.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I guess I would hold my punches a little bit, say it isn't working as well as we had hoped and we suggested. And we have, I mean, it, it's working a little bit, right?
Yeah, I don't think it is. That's not the message I want to send. The message I want to send is if you, if you don't comply with what we all understood the spirit of this to be, which is to fill that lot, you lose your right to use this field.
There's, there's fine print down here at the bottom that says the planning board determined that the applicant will utilize a parking lot offsite for at least sixty vehicles. So, it's actually quite specific. The upper three are, are conditions of removal, but the findings, um, down below.
Well, that's, that's a good point, okay?
That's pretty specific.
Make a motion then.
Well, let's, let's kind of talk a little.
I mean, I don't think we have to hit them over the head with a sledgehammer.
Yeah, let's not make the motion until we talk a little bit about this math. It's a little tricky, you know? We don't want to do, make the same mistake that, not that we're amending this or anything, but there's a lot of, um, factors that we're not quite seeing the whole.
But it does, I mean, Catherine's right, it does say the applicant, we, we determined, the planning board determined that the applicant will utilize a parking lot offsite for at least sixty vehicles to reduce the total number of vehicles traveling down Island Road. Now, that, the wording of that, it could include a parking lot up at Clarion or wherever, if they have other offsite parking.
I read that differently, that they're going to somehow avail themselves of a parking lot that has sixty spots in it. Whether or not we're saying sixty people, sixty cars have to be in there, is another thing.
That's right, it doesn't say that. It really doesn't say that.
You could read it that way for sure.
Well, the applicant will utilize a parking lot offsite for at least sixty vehicles.
No, I, see, I think, I think George is right. I think it means that the parking lot has to hold up these sixty vehicles. I'm not saying they have to fill it up with sixty vehicles.
Any person who was here the night that we discussed this could not possibly, even a lawyer could not make that kind of an argument in the straight face.
So, what if, would this work if we said that at any one time after two months, there has to be more vehicles in the parking lot than at the ball field until a maximum of sixty? I mean, if there's a hundred and twenty-one vehicles there on any given day, there's sixty in the auxiliary parking lot and sixty-one in the ball field, well, then we can't argue with that because there's not room in the auxiliary lot. But I don't know if they've ever gone up to a hundred and twenty cars. Maybe they do at peak periods.
I mean, I, I don't think they do, I think when they do the traffic, when they came and gave us the numbers, I don't think the fields have enough space that they would have had it. But I think, I think what George, I mean, I would say fifty percent of all cars parked there, at least fifty percent of all cars parked there have to be in the auxiliary parking lot up to six. And that way, at least we're saying, at least, you know, at least more than half the cars have to be parked in the lot.
So, now, what do we do about those parents who drive up and down this, drive, drive down the street, drop off their children, drive back and park their car in auxiliary lot and then walk down the street and then later walk back to their car, get their car, drive down there and pick up their kids?
With a SUV making twelve miles to the gallon.
Right, I mean, there's a little wrinkle, the whole drop off thing has still increased trips that were not counted because it's not a stationary parked car. The trip meter would catch that, but we're not, you know, whatever their vehicle count are, we count.
Well, I think that's the other part. I think, you know, so far, we're just, we're saying, you know, if somebody directing traffic into the lot, the drop off area is in the auxiliary parking lot. We have yet to get the numbers, I think we should say, we want the traffic numbers for the spring, we haven't gotten them. We want the traffic study done, the counts. I think they have to put two counters in, one at one end of Island Road and one at the Florida near the Oxbow.
Yeah, I don't want to get bogged down in technicalities on, you know, how many cars and so on because, I mean, conceivably the people that are in the auxiliary parking lot could leave before the other people and leave an imbalance. I mean, it's just, you know, you can't cut it too fine, at least on the, this is the warning stage here.
The problem with the, the traffic count, if I was on the team, I'd say, hey, tomorrow is, we're doing traffic counts. Pass out the flyers so everybody remember, mark the auxiliary lot. So, they meet their count, they submit their data and they're good. So, maybe you could ask for more frequent traffic counts than twice a year.
Of course, the problem, another problem is that the soccer fields are only a small, they're not every piece of traffic on Summer Road, especially in summer and the weekend.
So, that's, I mean, they got counted cars.
Bet you don't know where the cars are, really. Okay, well, let's get this out.
Yeah, I, I think if we get too specific, we're just going to hamster Tony. But I think we want to send, I mean, I think the message is fairly strong. We want, I don't know, fifty percent, George?
Fifty percent sounds fine to me, so if there are.
Up to sixty.
If there are sixty, if there are thirty cars in the field and only ten cars, as an example, up in the auxiliary lot, that's a, a big check mark, a big flag for that business.
I think number one, that we should urge them to make every attempt to fill up the auxiliary parking lot first. The other, then the metric about having at least fifty percent of the cars parked in the auxiliary lot is, would be the next thing. I think that's one way to measure that.
And I think, I mean, a signed drop off area. You have to have a sign already, it's a sign, it's a sign that says drop off.
In the lot.
In the lot.
But also throw it back to them to take responsibility for fulfilling the intention of their agreement. Why can't they release their own?
Okay. Are you ready with the announcement?
So, on this given weekend when Tony was there, one day, he counted two hundred cars. They, they probably weren't the same two hundred, you know, the same cars counted four times. Probably a hundred and fifty very different cars. That's three hundred car trips at least back and forth on that little street. So, um, that is not mitigating, we, we don't have the numbers that we had earlier for the neighborhood counts, but they haven't really mitigated any.
Yeah, every car that they stop at the auxiliary lot is two trips.
Right, yeah.
Up and down, two trips down the road and back.
So, now we want to talk about a timeframe. We want to say to Tony, four weeks, six weeks? Give him a little encouragement from our end, two months?
Give him six weeks.
To ask Tony to go back in six weeks is what you're saying?
No, no, well, we give him, yeah.
I don't necessarily tell him what Tony's going to do back, so, why not just say they have this.
Well, we want to give him a deadline.
Timeframe for compliance.
Right, and then Tony can go any month.
He can go anytime, drop it.
I mean, they're, they're full until their season now. I don't, I think six weeks is too long of a same length. It's not like this is new news.
Right, and it's not like they can't broadcast flyers called comments this coming weekend and next weekend and let them know this is a serious issue, we got what they're doing.
I mean, he can walk, somebody can walk in, like you said, put flyers on all seventy, those cars that are parked down there, it'll take ten minutes.
They'll get the word out, if they think they're going to listen to fields, they'll get the word out.
Now, will Tony go if we ask him to re-inspect it? Will he only go if he's complained?
Well, I, I think he's happy to go if you ask him to re-inspect, but he'd be mixed with all his other clients, you know?
Yeah.
If there's a fire, so we can, he's not going to.
Okay, what do you got?
So, six points, sort of, you know, recommend to Tony that, you know, the applicant had a performance, the process isn't currently working. I think you should do some things to come into performance specifically. First, attempt to fill up this, the auxiliary lot first. Second, sort of the metrics for that is at least fifty percent of the cars parked, hopefully the auxiliary lot, till auxiliary lot's full. They should create a drop off spot at the auxiliary lot if they're walking. Just generally, they give the message to them, they need to take responsibility for enforcing themselves, that's not, that was job and credit problem, it's fearless. And I'd expect full compliance to everyone.
For what?
Expect full compliance.
Into the month, the month? Okay.
And, and full compliance, so at, if there isn't full compliance in a month, that means their permit is withdrawn and they cannot hold soccer games on that field?
I suspect just to be a little more careful and say, you know, at, at that, if it's not done, you may well do that.
When does the spring season end?
I don't know.
I forget.
I imagine it's time closely to school, probably close to twenty eighth June.
That's what I thought too, so.
But I don't think they play much in the summer. Yeah, I think it, there's a brief time in the summer, July and August, it might be clinics and stuff, but I don't think there's a full season for them.
So, will, then if we give them four weeks, do you think the season will have ended by four weeks and there won't be an issue?
Well, that, that doesn't matter whether it's anymore after four weeks or not.
Right, so then during the summer, if they do have big events and they do jamborees and things like that, if we find that the neighbor sees during the summer, there's eighty cars down there and there's only four up on the top lot, that's, I'm a violation, correct?
It's also a lot harder because then you have the all these people trapped, it's part of separate soccer traffic.
No, but not the parking, though. The Oxbow fishermen and the users there park in a very different lot than where the, the soccer clubs do. I, I don't know, there's other two soccer fields that are in that, I want to say the north area up near the water.
Where the airplane parks, some used to park.
Yeah, there's soccer fields there that they use and so the parents would park there. So, you're right, it will be a little bit more difficult for days.
So, we're talking about, you know, somebody standing there with a flag, a North American Soccer Club T-shirt on, you know, directing traffic into the, your, your.
Hope so.
Yeah.
So, the fishermen help to do that. Does somebody care to make a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, well, I think we might, well, hold on.
Can I just ask, do you have in there, um, amendments that, that the drop offs occur at the auxiliary? Um, I'll make a motion that we recommend to Tony to, uh, take the steps that, uh, Wayne just detailed.
Second, Mr. Steve? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Do I vote if I wasn't here last night?
Yes. Yeah, well, this is kind of a.
Actually, since one of the, two of the regular members aren't here, both of you guys could go and answer if you wanted, but. Okay, all right, so we got, they all voted. Normally, in the case of auxiliary members or whatever you call them, you cannot vote on things if all the other members are here. If you do it, if one member is missing, we do it on a rotating basis or whatever, whoever person voted last time would sit down. And it's, it's come up a couple of times on this issue. In this case, both of you can vote. You cannot vote on subdivision approvals, right? In this case, both of you can vote. You cannot vote on subdivision approvals, right? Because other than that, you vote as a full loaded member if one of the, one of the members is not here.
You want to take full part in discussions, I think it's really useful.
Yeah, you, you know, I take full part in discussions.
If you're here in a meeting, if you can't vote on it, and then it comes up for a final vote two weeks later, and a full member isn't there, then you can vote, so.
Yeah.